Here, Mike.
Here, Rick.
Here, John.
Here, Sarah.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do the Senate agenda, I need to add for F, for super, for managing cases on that too. So I have a Senate agenda.
Motion to approve?
A motion to approve, I have second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? The Senate place for discussion items not already on agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. By the National Historic Preservation Proclamation. Whereas historic preservation is necessary for urban and rural Americans to manage and sustain community development, liability, neighborhood revitalization, local character and pride. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the material aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. And whereas people save in places is a theme for National Historic Preservation Month. We recognize the leadership and efforts of members of the Lisbon Historical Preservation Commission to protect and preserve historical resources in our community. And whereas we recognize the Lisbon Historical Preservation Commission's partnership with Dillon County, the State of Historical Society of Iowa, and the National Trust for Historical Preservation. Now therefore, I, Davis O'Connor, Mayor of Lisbon, proclaim May 2022 as National Historic Preservation Month and as the people of Lisbon, Iowa, to join citizens across the United States by recognizing and participating in this special observance. You guys got anything on that?
Thank you.
Discussion possible action in reference to green dog by case.
Mark is still tonight, so our attorney, so he could not make it. He advised to hear any new information from the last time and then he'd like counsel to make a decision.
Did I get any new information from the last time?
No, I have new information that was heard since, whether she, Corey pled guilty to her found in register violation beside her.
Do you have any dog idea that's been taken care of?
I believe so, if I pled in the pen and find.
No, I mean, has the dog been, like, raped, eaten shots or anything?
No clue.
Have they been, did they register with city?
No.
And she made it clear she wasn't going to unless we ruled favorably. They will.
Do I got, do I have any motion on this?
If necessary, make a motion to leave it as it is. The dog is still banned and exiled and no changes to the code.
Yeah. Be banned and exiled, not yet. But I'm not allowed to come back.
Right.
Second.
Got motion second. Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
I know your heads are turned on that, Mike. We have ordinance on the books right now that, I think you were kind of involved with this when they set up. I think it was right before they came on council. Lincoln Rex was mayor. They, um, we went, it went from one time to zero tolerance. Because they're the one who wants to be the one that says, we should kick the dog out and bring him back in. That's kind of why we want, and I, I think maybe we've had maybe five since I've been on council.
But the only indirect effect on that, if, if the owner would comply with all
If the owner.
changes, et cetera, but it obviously doesn't appear that it is, so that's why.
It's written in the code that, you know, if we go, if you go on the property and the dog bites you, you're at fault. I mean, it's, it's only when the dog is at fault and the owner's at fault.
The dog was in, the dog was in public space when the incident occurred and the victim claimed, did not say the paper had opened up.
And let's not forget that they knew that tonight was tonight for us. We made it clear to them in the last meeting, but then showed up. And no one is here to discuss. So at this point, it must not be an ordinance at this point today.
I just didn't like it when they started playing around with the police when they said they needed the shots and stuff like that. We, we gave them ample amount of time to provide that information. And to this day, I don't think they've even, they've done that, so what do you do, you know?
Yep.
I mean, you know, it's, it's pretty simple. And we got, you know, we got a coordinate code of ordinance and books. We go by, that's our law. That's the law we go by, pretty easy.
Well, I remember a lot, we had two bite. And too many times there was a second bite.
Yep. Alright, let's move on. Discussion possible action in reference awarding bids to Phase One Sports Complex.
So Lisa is here from YTT. Um, we had our bid opening on Thursday, it was the fifth. And we had two bids come in and Lisa will talk about them now.
Hi, Lisa, first of YTT design, everyone. So we had two bids come in. We had bids around engagement and boomerang. The way we set up the bids on this one, we were trying to maximize cost savings. So we had a base bid that was most of the work for the project. And then we had a couple of alternate, like, option things to try to maximize what we can do. So our first alternate, just to give you a little background, was the grading of the baseball fields. And if, so if the budget numbers came in good for the base bid, we could add that in. And then we had two other alternates and they were basically like a less expensive parking lot and a full HMA parking lot. So chip seal and then the full HMA. And then the last alternate was part of the storm sewer, part that's not going to be underneath the road. We were going to switch from concrete pipe to plastic pipe to see if there was a cost savings there. And there were cost savings, so. I'll give you the quick rundown on the boomerang bid. I'll do that one first. Our engineers estimate for the base bid for just the main part was nine hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred eighty thousand, five hundred eight dollars approximately. Boomerang came in for the base bid at one million, ninety-five thousand, three hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. And then Dave Schmidt came in for the base bid at one million, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety cents. So Dave Schmidt was the lowest base bid there. So pretty much we were looking at that. I think we had also mentioned that we were going to look at the base bid as the main reason for who would select. So going on to the alternates then. Our first alternate was the grading of baseball fields. We estimated the engineers for grading of the baseball fields of one hundred seventy-three thousand, seventy-five dollars as an add to the project. Boomerang came in at two hundred forty thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents for the baseball fields. And Dave Schmidt came in at one hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. The alternates for the chip seal and the HMA. We had approximate number for the chip seal parking lot of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And then we had a full HMA parking lot at a hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars estimate. Boomerang came in for the chip seal at sixty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy. And for the HMA, they came in at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy. So they were lower than chip seal. And then Dave Schmidt was lower on this one also and they came in at, chip seal at fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and ten. And then the HMA came in at a hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty. So on that one, we are probably looking to go with chip seal. It's significant savings on that. And then last alternate was the storm sewer option, which is going from HDPE is the plastic pipe, RCP is the reinforced concrete pipe. We estimated the cost, the plastic pipe would be about thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. And the storm sewer, the concrete pipe would be about forty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six. Boomerang came in for plastic pipe at sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-six. And for concrete, it's seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty. Dave Schmidt came in for the plastic pipe at forty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents. And for the concrete, at fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents. So a little over ten thousand dollars, thirteen thousand dollars saving for the plastic there. So that's the summary. So based on this, we are, we think, based on the bidding climate right now and the prices of supplies and everything, that we're actually rather happy with the Dave Schmidt price. It's, it's actually not too far off of what we were hoping to get at. So we are looking at recommending the Dave Schmidt base bid. Alternate A, so adding grading of baseball fields because that was a really good price for that. Going with alternate B, option one, which is chip seal parking lot. And then alternate C, option one, which is the HDPE plastic pipe.
Can I do a add up with that total on our list?
It is, uh, one million, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents.
You're going to be talking about that ten cent?
I, I don't know if you guys read my notes in there about the funding, where we were getting that from. I'll just go over this quick. So if you remember, the bond for the project was nine hundred thousand at that time. Keep in mind, that was Phase One, which included everything we're doing now except the grading and the addition of the ball fields. With that, um, since we received a million dollars for the well and we can repurpose some of that well money towards our water main project, I would feel comfortable using the three hundred and thirty-four thousand of the rescue funds towards this project as well. Just because we have the excess of six hundred thousand for the well that we no longer need. Parks currently has a hundred and fifty thousand in capital improvement. So if you add all those together, we have one point three four four million. Would concede the money needed to get this current bid taken care of. What this will include is everything done for the soccer fields, all the baseball grading and seeding of grass. The only thing that will be left at the baseball field will be the fences and the actual diamond, cutting out the line, you know, putting in the line and, you know, cutting the infield and.
And now the buildings eventually.
And the buildings and all that stuff. But this would get us, the main thing is the grading and the seeding, which is more green space for one. Worst case scenario, we still can play ball there with, especially with the little kids in our park directly, even if we didn't have the money. But I would, I feel comfortable with this. I haven't sat down with Lisa to go through the next step of what that cost is. But if you remember from meetings before, we talked about using some lost money to help with this project. Well, if we do this, what we have proposed tonight, we're not even touching any of that lost money yet. So that could be, that could be used for that next, you know, for finishing the diamonds as well as, keep in mind, there's, there's still a park set aside fund that's got money in it and there'll be another fifty thousand going in July one to capital improvement. So, um, I'm really happy with how this turned out and I, I think that it's, I would feel comfortable moving forward with it.
So basically, this is start to finish, except for.
Except for finishing, the concrete work, the dugouts, the fencing and the line.
This is all the grading.
This is all the grading, all the.
This is all third Avenue due.
All third Avenue, all the way out to Washington, urban gutter.
Then we'll side walk that, right?
It'll be looped, sewer, storm sewer, water main.
Stubbing out for future to the west, putting stuffs in and stubbing all the concessions going downs to be ready for the concession stands.
And all the three-phase power will be there for there, plus if anybody decides to develop to the west, that will be all there for that as well.
And for some, for some reason, I had one point three million and I had it anyway. I don't know if there was, talked about before. I personally, I don't, I personally, I want to do it all. I mean, like I've always said, nothing gets cheaper.
I would point out that the price you got on the alternate A for the grading of baseball fields is a very good per car price by QB, if you look at the actual QB target rate.
On the pipe, what's the longevity difference between the two?
Uh, for the pipe, we were switched to the plastic. I'm not too concerned if we go with the concrete there or not. But this is, what we had to do is we had to continue putting the storm sewer in on what would have been walnut, but we're not doing walnut yet. But what we did is we kept the storm sewer in place in the exact location. It would be, in the event that you ever wanted to do walnut, it would be ready to go. Like, so we're, instead of putting an intake where we would have put a road intake, we're just putting a little, like a, a structure, a less expensive structure. So in the future, walnut ever goes in, you pop those off, put intakes in and build a road right on top of it. So if walnut ever could happen, the only difference would be is that you now have some plastic pipe on one side of the road. It's not even under the road, it's off the road versus some concrete. So.
Longevity wise, there isn't that much difference?
Not really, but typically we prefer to use concrete underneath all roads and within all public projects.
But this is under the road.
Yeah, because we're still comfortable making the change because we're not sure walnut's going to go in and if it ever does.
They're going to grade it, so it'll be graded and grass seeded.
It'll be graded and grass seeded. It won't look just like a road there, we're not going to make it clearly obvious, but it'll, it's going to be close to what the road would be eventually, so you would be able to still put it in the future.
Pretty same, walnut will go all the way to there at one time?
Yeah, like if you start giving development out there, you probably want another access point.
Yeah.
But they're just going to grade it so that it's prepared and ready for them to choose to do that.
We kept the design the same, so it's ready to connect at some point in the future, we didn't change it.
You guys got any questions?
Start, completion, dates.
They will be starting sometime in June as soon as we have all the contracts in place and receive all the bonds and the documents. So we just pay, that'll be next, sometime early June, we'll be giving them the, they'll get the word tonight. They will be substantial completion, we have as November thirtieth or?
November thirtieth.
Just before December.
And then anything else, I think they had till July one to finish up.
Yeah, so substantial completion, meaning they should have all the major infrastructure roads and everything in, barring some enforcement for certain standards, but that should all be in, everything should be graded, everything will be seeded. And then if they can't get all the seeding and stuff done, they have all winter and early spring to finish that up. And we wouldn't even start looking at liquidated damages until sometime in June, next year. Our goal is just to get them graded and seeded so we can start that vegetation growing because we have a lot of turf to establish.
Got any questions?
I make a motion that we go with the Dave Schmidt base, Dave Schmidt's, um, baseball field, Dave Schmidt's, um, chip and seal, and then Dave Schmidt plastic pipe being restored.
Motion on that, I have second.
Second.
Motion second. Nate.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Rick. Aye. John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Alright, you guys move on for a minute.
Thank you.
That's a big accomplishment, guys. Huge accomplishment for the citizens. You guys have that done. Alright, discussion possible action on award bid for cutting down trees within cemetery.
Okay, so I have put some bids in front of you. I also emailed the bids out that we received. Did all of you get an email with those? Just real quick. Probably the most alarming thing was on size. Keep in mind, the thirty thousand dollar bid was a lot of unknowns. Also, it was extremely wet when he bid that and he thought we wanted it done right away. So after talking to him, we said that we can wait for things to firm up so we don't have to use matting. What that did is knock one to two days off as well as one to two days of crane rental. So that is the, why the significant savings. It wasn't, and keep in mind, this thirty thousand before was not to exceed. This is also at eighteen thousand, but just know that that's why the significant price because now we can do it when he feels comfortable driving the crane there instead of using mats and having extra time to get to the new position. And then the only other one that was a complete bid was Frank's. And that was the issue with, his concern was the tearing up the concrete or the asphalt in the cemetery because he did not want to go through the grass. He required that we use the asphalt driveway and he was confident that he would break that up. So, um, that one was kind of thrown out. And then Noel's Tree Service was a complete bid at twenty-two five, so that's equal to size, you know, same bid, full, full project.
Except for they bid all five stumps, so it's actually twenty thousand. Because it's a twenty-five hundred for the one stump.
And just so you know, obviously, we know we have a stump grinder. Um, what the issue is with that is they got to grind a stump in order to get to the next one. And theirs is much faster than what ours will do. So that's why we had to bid the price. The last stump, um, we'll take care of. So that's why it's four, not five.
So we're calling that the one that's grown into a gray stone?
Well, we're going to look at it and if, if, but regardless, if, if we can get it, we'll get it. If not, it'll stay. So that's not the conclusion there. And then the burning autumn one, they could do four of the five trees, but couldn't get the fifth one, which they required a crane and didn't have access to one, so that was incomplete. So really, it's down to Noel's Tree Service and size. If you want a complete bid to get you the entire project without damages, potential damages.
Do you have a motion on this?
Motion to accept size bid.
Motion I have second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Discussion possible action in reference to housing rehab program extension.
These next two kind of go hand in hand. If you were probably, extend the housing rehab so that they can get some, uh, service to some other people. There's two houses that were completed and just to get all the paperwork finished, they'd like the, the extension to be made. So if you guys would be willing to extend that, Mark from EC Town would greatly appreciate that.
I make a motion to extend the housing rehab program.
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Discussion possible action on final payment request for our housing rehab program.
Alright, these are for the two houses, one ten North Jackson Street in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars and then one fourteen West Market for twenty-one, three fifty.
Have a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion approved, I have second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Third and final reading, ordinance oh-three, twenty twenty-two, update to Chapter ninety-nine, so it's. Have a motion.
Motion to approve their reading.
Motion approved, second.
Second.
Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion possible approval of Resolution ten, twenty twenty-two, fund transfers.
These are transfers that I need to do as we're entering June. Um, some of it is just clear up towards the end of our budget fiscal timing and then the rest of them are to pay our loans, principal and interest payments.
Motion.
Make a motion to transfer funds.
Have a motion, I have second.
Second.
Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Rick. Mike.
Aye.
Discussion possible approval of Resolution eleven, twenty twenty-two, lease of mortgage, parcel A, flat survey, eighteen fifty-one, over estates.
Uh, this is something that should have been done several years ago and just got missed, so. They've paid everything back and it's all good to go, this is where the rehab center is.
Motion to go approve.
Second.
Motion second, Nate.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Rick. John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Four finals. Uh, nothing too many. City engineer report.
Nothing to report. I just wanted to sit in on the, oh, from the soccer field award. That's good to see that finally moved forward and that'll help us out with the well sightings. Any questions for me?
Do you have any for Dave? Thank you, Dave. Public sport director.
Uh, we're continuing to work on the dirt down there at the park, trying to seed down, that's a weekend areas we're not working. We still, now if the rain's going to cool off a little bit for us, got to get out to the cemetery. Chip seal project's done, that one's relatively smooth considering the weather. The one thing I want to bring to your guys' attention is we got like two weeks before the pool's supposed to be open and I need three to five days without rain because we have to paint it. So that's only a pushback, so our open date might not be exactly on Monday of the holiday. It might be a few days after, just to give you guys a head up on that. So we're going to do everything we can to, to push for that date, but I don't, I don't know if it's going to be possible or not.
This is what this is. We have any comments, any comments?
Uh, the parking lot in the alley, well, road over on the, the girls' baseball field, that's just full of a million potholes in there. And it's obviously that it's all been fresh. Do we have anything that could degrade or smooth?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the dry, we need it to dry up, so we'll get back on our alleys again too, so we'll get over there.
I just noticed that it's all new, it's all new gravel in there.
We'll get over there.
Obviously, the lights are a little more important.
Do you have anything else, Chris? Somebody else got any questions for us? Person or director?
We are, we got last week of soccer, all of our littles, pre-k, kindergarten, first year done. They finished up Monday and a half ago. And our last games for second, third graders, if you want to roll, and then fourth, fifth and sixth is Thursday. Um, and pretty much right now, I'm just working on transitioning into our summer sports, intro, T-ball, coach pitch, third through sixth baseball and softball, um, mowing. And I want to thank Travis and the maintenance guys for all their work over at the mow fields, getting that all graded and getting grass seed down and it looks a lot better already in that project, for it up pretty good. So I appreciate all their work over there.
You got anything for grading? Please, for me.
Nothing additional, other than the inquiry report is, it should be in your packets.
Anything, Greg, anything for Doug? Kurt Blugs.
Nothing tonight.
I've heard you.
Uh, I do not have anything. Fire department related to me.
City manager.
Kurt Blugs still working on the barns. He was able to find a barn in Marion, so he's been working to get, uh, barn boards off of that barn that was torn down in ratio. So, uh, he's got the east side to construct some areas where they were bad. Um, he's also replacing one more beam, but I believe all of the, uh, masonry work on the inside is done, top pointing to the rock. So, uh, we should be finishing up shortly with that first hay barn. He did say we were on budget for, uh, for that project, for that first barn. He also knows that, uh, he did get the bid for the, uh, gazebo and he knows that, uh, we want to get that done before the end of fiscal year, so hopefully that's the case. BSM is coming up, I believe tomorrow, weather pending. They had some progress made on the paint removal down there. They're bringing a couple of their specialists up to see what the next step would be to assist in getting the rest of that off there. So that old white stuff is pretty stubborn, so. Anyway, I really don't have any update other than, um, they keep working at it. I know that, uh, the weather hasn't helped either. I know that the stuff that they put on there, they kind of like to bake on or off, so that could have played a role in it as well. I'll get an update from them, uh, once they come up to reevaluate. Uh, the pond was stocked with fish over at, uh, Myers property. So that's a good sign. And also, I don't remember if I talked about it or said it was done, but the electric pole along.
but the electric pole line installed over there for us. So we'll be getting solar light just for some extra light around there. And then, um, of course you get the light there and the power there. Now we don't need the water right now because it's pretty full, so. Uh, but it's there for the future use. The lights at the park, we made pretty good progress in the rain for the two days that we were here. The plan right now, praying for no rain tonight, uh, tomorrow afternoon and Wednesday, we're going to finish, uh, pulling the poles and setting the other poles. So, um, the hope is with no rain that, uh, by the end of the week, this project will be pretty well done. But we're just, we have mats, uh, tree size, size tree service has, um, offered his mats to us. Uh, so in the event that it's somewhat tacky, we can use the mats to walk the crane out there, so we're not going to cause any damage to the playing surfaces, so. And last week when we were there, um, it was pretty muddy, but, um, kudos to the guys for, uh, getting that looking pretty sharp. They, they got it all leveled off and got it seeded and matted and, uh, looks really nice over there, all things considered. That's all I have. Any questions? Any questions for Brandon?
Got a fish in there. Carp. There's nothing over there. It's still catching or released, like?
It's, yeah. Uh, report, you still have the report?
Uh, no.
Alright, we can get you a copy of the report when they came out and shocked everything and told us what they should do and then. Basically, that's what they did. They just went off of their report. There should be some bass, some, some hybrid.
Bluegill, red-eared sunfish, hybrid bluegill, channel catfish, largemouth bass. That's it.
Nothing for you?
According to the bill.
Question on the feeding and, alright, would we be better off to saw that area? High school wall's starting now.
I think a lot of it, all the fence are.
There's no, there's no, there should not be any playing surface affected. Uh, this is just in the spectator area. So what we did, if you go by there, they seeded it down and then put the net, the netting down, which also has seed in it. And.
You have the submachine gun, keep the people off.
Yeah. But worst case scenario.
That's what I'm saying.
They can at least, if they absolutely have to, they can at least, you know, want to, but they'll walk on it to not get muddy and make ruts and do different things. But, uh, we can kind of look at it. My hope is that now that it's getting warm, it should take off by the twenty-third. We should have some grass there.
Should.
So.
No questions? Christina, do you have anything?
Um, I am just working on end of fiscal year items. And Marcia did finally get her chance to have the third graders come and help clean up downtown on Friday, so. Was, posted home three times due to the rain, but they got it.
They were working like baby, man.
Do you have any questions for Christina? Nate?
Uh, they don't have anything today.
Mike?
Nothing.
Rick? John?
Now, thanks to the crew that does the chipping. They're doing a really neat job. Appreciate that. And thanks to all that have been involved in all the progress we're seeing here tonight. Thank you.
Sarah?
Um, I was kind of going to go off what John said. Chipping has gone very well, doing a very good job. And I see you guys out all the time, so thank you to the city crew.
Only thing I got, only thing I got is mow season back upon us, uh, blow your grass out in the street, make sure you clean it up. Or you will be signed for it.
And mow your grass.
Do we got anything else? New business, possible closed session pursuant to code of Iowa selection twenty-one. By one, I to evaluate the professional competency of an individual's employment, hiring, performance, if discharge is being considered unnecessary, would mean us an irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual's request for closed session. Looks like the first one is Jake. Jake, would you like to go over in the closed session?
Yes.
Need a motion to go in closed session?
Motion to go in a closed session.
Second.
Motion a second, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Hi.
Rick? Mike?
Hi.
Aye.